We're going to be pledged by the jazz band.
We're in allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please pause with us for a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here. It's not often that we have this big a crowd. Must be that the jazz band has just brought everybody out. First, approval of the agenda.
Some of it.
A second?
A second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda? We went over it quite a lot the other night, but there may be still some questions. Stand to motion?
Some of it.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, now we're down to spotlight.
Okay, we have two separate spotlights tonight. First, and we'd ask that you, if you're a participant in the band, that you stay and view the second spotlight, which is recognition of Duke talent honorees. And we're pleased to have with us tonight Mr. Andrew Lynn, the jazz band director from Stewart's Creek Middle School. He's going to take it away here in a second. I know you guys would be really excited to have a high school sitting right across the street at Middle School, wouldn't you? There's county commissioner back here. And you may, maybe you can hit him up for 50 million dollars and we can get that done. Anyway, appreciate you being here and please take it away.
Alright, thank you very much.
This is our Stewart's Creek Middle School jazz band. This is a select group of seventh and eighth graders from our band program, which we have about 160 students that participate in our entire band program. And these students do a little extra practice in the mornings during homeroom to also participate in this group. The first tune you heard was called "Killer Joe" and featured Zach Ditchett on the baritone sax and Megan Sweeney on the trumpet. We've got a few more for you. The first one is "Harlem Notturn," and this is going to feature Madison Haskell on the alto sax and Christina Beck on the trumpet. Thank you. We'll do one more for you. Before we do that, I'd like to thank four members, Superintendent Gill, for allowing us to play tonight. And we hope that this serves as kind of a thank you for your support for the music programs. I don't know that everybody always realizes what outstanding music programs and band programs we have in Rutherford County, some of the best in the state. And we appreciate all the support you guys give us. I also want to say thanks to our principal, Mr. Creasy, for all of his support at Stewart's Creek Middle School as well. So, thank you very much. Our last tune is "Let It Grow," and it's going to feature trombone solo by Austin Mail.
Mr. Gill had it just a second ago. He turned to me and said, "Wow." And that's when I said, "Wow, that was terrific."
You guys are playing well beyond your years. I truly mean that. We've been privy to various choirs and jazz bands, et cetera. You guys are simply awesome. And I want to say that typically behind any kind of good athletic team or a good band, there's a good director. Mr. Lynn, clearly you've done a remarkable job with these guys. I'm sure you've put in more time than you're required to do, and it's obviously paying off. So, let's hear from Mr. Lynn.
Any comments, Mr. Blair?
Of course they're outstanding. You already said that. But this group right here, to maintain their concentration with those trombones coming close here, that is, that is also amazing. You guys are incredible.
He can ruffle his hair. Thank you very much, and go ahead.
If you guys can sit tight for about, what, five, 10 minutes while we recognize some other scholars, I think you'll be happy that you did, and you'll probably be inspired to even try harder in school. That said, Ms. Bernie, would you take the podium, please?
We're here tonight to recognize seventh grade students who were, who scored at exceptional levels in the Duke Talent Identification Program. This program identifies academically talented seventh graders based on standardized test scores. And they are given the opportunity then to take the SAT or the ACT as seventh graders. And there, we had, in Rutherford County this year, we had 126 seventh graders to participate, to complete one of these two assessments. Of those students, 76 scored at a level which qualifies them for state recognition, and they will be invited to Vanderbilt for a ceremony to recognize them. And there were six students who scored at a grand level, which qualifies them to be invited to attend a recognition ceremony at Duke in North Carolina. So, we want to congratulate them. One of the really wonderful parts of this talent identification program is that since these students are already excelling on grade level tests that they take with all of their grade level peers, this gives them, their families, and the schools information about how they perform on out-of-grade level tests, because they're taking the same SAT and ACT that high school students are taking. So, we want to recognize them tonight. I'm going to call their names. I will call them in alphabetical order so you can kind of listen for your name. When you hear your name, if you would come forward, Mr. Gill will give you your certificate. And do you want them to stand, to remain standing until everybody has been called?
I think, I think you can go back to your seat immediately following the presentation. If you'll go to the lobby, Mr. Evans is going to make a picture of the group out there.
Great. And I also want to say, there are going to be several students not here tonight. At least two schools were having their academic banquets tonight, and lots of softball and other activities. Emma Adcock. Barat Arif. John Atwood III. James Beckman. Artson Lately. Eric Voight. Bo Brown. Douglas Brown. Melanie Brumfield. Rory Butler. Nathan Carruthers. Alexis Seadolph. Nicole Chandler. Andrew Clark. Audrey Darblish. Elizabeth Devoncourt. Stephanie Decker. Noah Delph. Alexandria Dixon. Evelyn Drake. Drew Engel. Christina Franklin. Maury Pupui. Jordan Fullerton. Ashley Barcinet. Dalton George. Salami Gosh. Heidi Henderson. Dustin Henigan. Benjamin Hillis. Connor Hurley. Faith James. Nora Johnson. Lucas Kowinski. Bryce King. Lydia Claus. Elijah Leskman. Jessica Lexler. Kristen Mar. Alexis Marshall. Mason McDermott. Solomon Mahar Demise. Nicholas Moore. Haley Munn. Yasmin Mertaza. Mark Oivera. Liam K. Matthew Renniger. Zachary Shugan. Victoria Simmons. Craig Skinner. Claudia Smith. Tori Smith. Alexandra Snook. Esther Soper. Ezekiel Streitman. Alexa Stroh. Tucker Swinson. Brayden Terry. Zachary Taylor. Virginia Tips. Elliot Todd. Abigail Tracy. Dylan Upchurch. Zachary Utsman. Laura Valt. Kimberly Warren. Ashton Watson. Caroline Wells. Parker White. Emily Wilson. James Yang. Michael Zeitz.
I remind you guys, but these are recorded, they're played over and over again on television, on the Rutherford County Network, so you can see yourself playing in a band or receiving awards. The regulations, Mr. Mark will have one of you guys do it. I know Mr. Darson, he's drawn a certain thing on the table in the basement. Parents should be so proud of these guys. He honestly inspired them, disciplined them, taught them, supported them, taught them, looked at what's happened, looked at what their teachers hold for them. So, the regulations, what you've done is big stuff. I'm really proud of you. Also want to commend our principals for our area. I'm going to say, your principal, you can say it again.
There are also several teachers who came to support their students. So, if the teachers stand, if you can.
Okay, we're going to give everyone a chance to leave. We'll take a little intermission here so that you can, but we certainly invite you to stay if you want to listen to the rest of the meeting.
Hey, Mark, how you doing? I looked for your child, was he there? Was he? Okay. You're there. But it wasn't your own or something, was it? Okay. Oh, God, please, what's it, President? Hello? Yeah, I looked and looked and looked, and I couldn't see. Super gauzy, man, he's got it all. My mouth's like a cane. Come again? Yeah.
You've enjoyed your service that day.
Okay, let's call this meeting back to order. We have one visitor, Mr. Tracy Peck.
Usually don't make a speech, but since I've got three minutes, I'm gonna head and just throw it out, so I can make sure I get. Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Tracy Peck. You may recognize my name from the campus school spring fling fundraiser. I do not really enjoy being here to address you, but unfortunately, I'm not only here for myself, but also for the many parents and teachers who are afraid to speak for various reasons. When the spring fling was first proposed, I tried to encourage the redesign of the event, so it would be fair and more importantly, legal. After being denied, and another parent receiving unfavorable response from the school attorney, I took my case to the civil rights attorney for the state of Tennessee. On Tuesday, April 20th, I received notification from the state attorney that the spring fling had been stopped as it was designed. On Thursday, April 22nd, at least two students were allowed to be teacher for a half day. This was level six, a level requiring a donation of a hundred dollars to participate. I am most certain a meeting occurred on Wednesday, April 21st, informing campus school to stop this illegal fundraiser. My first question to you is why this action was allowed to occur on Thursday, in direct violation of state law. After the article appeared in the Daily News Journal, the spring fling was definitely stopped until it could be designed to be legal. The event was transferred to the jurisdiction of the campus PTC. All events making up the spring fling were advertised to occur after school, specifically at 3:00 PM. The initial event occurred on Monday, May 17th. Instead of beginning at 3:00 PM as advertised, students who had paid for the events were removed from class at 2:15 and placed on a bus departing the school by 2:30 PM. As I stated in my original opposition to this activity, I could not fathom having kids watch other kids get on a bus and leave while they were still in class due to their parents' desire or financial situation. From the description of a parent who had a child who stayed behind, this is what transpired. He got in the car crying to his mother because he could not attend. Gentlemen, this is beyond my comprehension as a parent, especially the grades that this happened to on Monday, K through two. Additionally, this action violates the civil rights of the students who remained in school. One will bet I be confident as a parent that laws will be not broken, and our children will not have to experience this type of embarrassment. On Tuesday, the bus did not depart until 2:45, but the parents who came to pick up their kids were forced to wait until all the spring fling participants were gone before they could be dismissed. I will let you decide in your mind if this is appropriate. So much has been said and written about this event. Unfortunately, more needs to be said. I want you and the public to know what is still happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Any comment? Do you have any comment? Thank you, sir.
Financial matters, general purpose budget amendments. This amendment reduces career ladder revenue account 46610 by one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars. And reduces expenditures for career ladder and adjust extended contract expenditures for a reduction in expenditures of one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars. These are state funds that have declined as teachers in these programs have retired. Recommend that you amend one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars from career ladder revenue account 46610, and to reduce the total of one hundred fourteen thousand seventy dollars in related expenditures as for career ladder, and to adjust extended contract expenditures as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. So moved. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
She carries.
This amendment budgets a ten thousand dollar contribution to our coordinated school health program that Middle Tennessee Medical Center made toward the fitness center at Smyrna Middle School. Other funds from the state's coordinated school health grant will cover the balance of this expenditure. Safe Schools part of the amendment is in function 72130. The amendment covers one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars in revenues and expenditures. These funds must be spent this school year for this program. There is also a revenue account change for this year's Safe School grant because it is funded from state fiscal stimulus funds. Recommend that we amend ten thousand for a grant from Middle Tennessee Medical Center and the related coordinated school health expenditures, and to amend one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars in Safe Schools revenue from the state and those related expenditures as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
She carries.
And I would say, and you said it earlier, Mr. Wise, we've had a work session on Tuesday, and these items have been discussed, that too's on television, if there's something here you're interested in, you can obviously reflect back and watch that, and it was considerable discussion.
Three, this amendment real allocates one hundred forty thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars in already budgeted classified staff expenditures at twenty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars in related benefits. A total of one hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars to budget lines where those funds are needed. Most of the funds being reallocated are available because of unfilled educational assistant positions. Recommend that we amend one hundred forty thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars in budgeted classified staff budget lines and twenty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars in budgeted benefits to other classified staff expenditures and benefits as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Four, this amendment real allocates two hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars in already budgeted certified staff expenditures and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars in related benefits. A total of two hundred forty-six thousand six hundred dollars to the budget lines where those funds are needed. Most of the funds being reallocated are being reallocated because the mix between vocational or regular education classes and the payment of negotiated bonuses for national certification. Recommend that we amend two hundred twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars in budgeted certified staff budget lines and twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars in budgeted benefits to other certified staff expenditures and benefits as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Five, this amendment funds seven hundred and four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars in additional employee medical insurance costs for this year. The source of the funding is a net decrease of six hundred thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars in already budgeted staff expenditures and one hundred four thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars in related benefits. For a total of seven hundred four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Most of the staff funds being reallocated are available due to turnover in classified positions. The increases in the staff amendments are just budget adjustments and not changes to positions. Recommend that you amend seven hundred four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars in additional employee medical insurance cost, and to reduce staff expenditures by six hundred thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and one hundred four thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars in related benefits as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She passes. Six.
This amendment covers four hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars in additional employee retirement expenditures by reallocating two hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars from the line item for electricity, seventy-one thousand nine dollars from vacant educational assistance, and seventy-five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars in various other employee benefit accounts. The increase in FICA and Medicare in function 71100, regular instruction, are due to the savings from pre-tax benefits that were primarily budgeted in that function. This amendment readjusts FICA and Medicare throughout the budget to reflect annual effective pre-tax benefits. Recommend that you amend four hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars in additional employee retirement expenditures by reallocating two hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars from the line item for electricity, seventy-one thousand nine dollars from vacant educational assistance, and seventy-five thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars in various other employee benefit accounts as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just a quick comment in connection with all these amendments, you know, at the start of the year, we had a hundred, two hundred and forty-three million dollar budget, you know, Mr. Sandvigen's staff do their very best to estimate each line item, and sometimes we fall short in a line item, sometimes we have a little extra money in that particular line item, and when we do, we amend money, go to the county court, they approve that amendment or that transfer of money within counts. It's virtually impossible to get it, it is impossible to get it right on, but I mean, we get pretty close most of the time, so that's the reason we're amending all this money. B, centralized cafeteria fund 143, 2010, 2011 budget. The 2010, 2011 operating budget for the centralized cafeteria fund has the following major components, and reflected is the budget shows last year's budget versus this year's budget, it's on our webpage. The revenue numbers are conservative and may be increased after analyzing May operations. Operating expenses are up because of opening the two new middle schools and central magnet school. The equipment expenditure has been increased as part of the plan to use some of the excess ballot that must be used to improve the program. Recommend that we approve the 2010, 2011 budget for the centralized cafeteria fund 143 as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
She carries.
C, capital projects fund 177, 2010, 2011 budget. The capital projects fund 177 is funded by five cents of the property tax. The 2010, 2011 budget uses all the anticipated revenue, which is, that five cents equals two million two hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred twenty dollars in order to fund the list of projects. Mr. Clardy has provided a list of those projects pursuant to what principals requested and other needs, and we recommend that you approve the 2010, 2011 budget for the major capital projects fund 177 and the list of projects as presented.
Further recommendations? Have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? D.
Capital projects fund 177, 2009, 2010 amendments. This amendment budgets an additional twenty-three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars in property taxes that the capital improvement fund will receive this year, an additional one thousand four hundred eight dollars in trustees commission, and increases fund balance by twenty-one thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars. The amendment also increases architect fees and reduces maintenance and repair services building by one thousand dollars. Recommend that you amend an additional twenty-three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars in property tax revenue to the capital improvement fund, an additional fourteen hundred eight dollars in trustees commission, to adjust one thousand between architect fees and maintenance repair services buildings, and to increase fund balance by twenty-one thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Request for approval for possible funding. The special education department is seeking board approval for possible funding for orientation and mobility training for one current employee. Jerry Carmichael, a special education vision specialist, will be participating in a two-year program with Salus University in Elkins Park, Pennsylvania, to obtain certification, become an orientation and mobility specialist. Orientation and mobility specialists help blind or visually impaired children know where they are in space and where they want to go. It also helps them to be able to carry out a plan to get there, which is mobility. Salus University will cover a hundred percent of the tuition for the first year, and plans to cover a substantial portion of the tuition for the second year. There are no plans for the Tennessee Department of Education's involvement and support, but no current agreements have been finalized. Special education department wants to alert the board to the possibility that some of the part of the second year's tuition may need to be covered from the federal IDEA Part B special ed funds in 2011, 2012. Funding through federal funds is required, an agreement will be written for Ms. Carmichael's continued service for a set number of years, or reimbursement by the funds expended. And our recommendation is that you approve the concept of the funding of any portion of the tuition cost for the second year of the certification program for orientation mobility through Salus University to be paid from federal IDEA Part B special ed funds.
You've heard the recommendation. Have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Have an approximate figure, a round figure of what this would be?
Sure, Ms. Bailey?
Then a few thousand or whatever.
I think they made a set decision just yet on what the tuition would be. It would be comparable, I'm sure, to the universities, or agree to work on to be ours. The first year, everything is done online, the second year, a lot of the courses are online, and then some of the training at Tennessee School for the Blind.
So you don't have any rough idea of what it would be for the portion on the.
No, sir, we do not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
The other Tuesday night, I kind of questioned this, and one of the things I had in my mind when reading it was, if we're going to employ another person here, but I understand that's not the case, this is just in addition to.
Right, exactly. Right now, we're having to contract for that service outside the system, and so by having one of our own personnel certified for that position, then they could pick up that part of the training.
Any more questions? Discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries.
You know, I got an email the other day, I gave it to you, and I've got it somewhere, Ms. Michael, I meant to tell you, ask you to give it to the board, but about one of our vision specialists out there that's worked with two or three kids.
We did get it.
Did you get that? I mean, wasn't that?
It was.
Kind of heartwarming to see those guys who are legally blind have those kind of successes. Be interesting for the public to know, too, maybe read it next time. Eleven, oppose 2010, 2011 budget. I first reminded you that next Tuesday night, we have our joint meeting with Health Ed and Budget here. Basically, there are no changes from the last time we met, possible exception. There may, there's seventy-three thousand dollars additional money that's, will be needed to be spent, one is we've had to budget forty-three thousand two hundred sixty-seven. One is we've had to budget forty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars net increase between career ladder and extended contract revenue expenses. Obviously, we don't have enough extended contract money to do all the services that we need in extended contract. And the second expense was, we had an agreement with the state. Matter of fact, on June the sixth, Excel Energy starts putting sensors in our school. Hopefully, that'll equate to big-time electrical savings. That said, it's already been voted on here, been voted on with the commission pursuant to a seven-year, zero-interest agreement on the first five hundred thousand, and the balance of that money, which I want to say is another one point six million, is, was it three percent for seven years? Well, the state notified us yesterday, and also Excel Energy, that they, they're going to honor the zero percent for seven years on the five hundred thousand. However, the seven-year, three percent agreement has been reduced to seven, to five years, three percent. So we have to pay it off sooner. Of course, the silver lining is it's less interest we'll pay. So what we'll have to do is commit an extra twenty-nine thousand dollars each year to pay that off in five years. So it's more of a notification. I think the county commission votes on it next time. I would presume that we still want to go forward with the project, especially since they've pretty much mobilized and bought all the, bought all the sensors in. But anyway, they've had a hard time seeing that, seeing that through anyway, but, but see light at the end of that tunnel. That's the only changes. If you recall, the last time we met on budget, we talked about our budget would not require a tax increase to the, to the citizens, which must have delighted the mayor and the county Ended up giving you guys a big loud round of applause at the county court the other night, which I thought was pretty good. But we've got to open three schools, and we know that we're going to pay those out of fund balance. We've taken painful steps to make sure that we make it without creating a property tax rate, even though our budget increase will be thirteen million dollars. The way we've been able to do that is that we've reduced fourteen point five EAs. The middle schools, we've reduced from two to one point five middle school band positions throughout the middle schools. We've reallocated technology specialists to other places. We didn't add, we reassigned spectrum teachers. I think we only used two in lieu of using more. But the big cost to us, and the reason we need more money to operate our budget next year, is that three point four million additional increase in retirement for employees, that our contribution, it will require us another one point one million in medical insurance because of higher participation. Step raises for existing staff will be another one point six five million. Again, that twenty-nine thousand for the loan payoff will be added back. So just to do those things is six point four six million dollars. It'll cost another four million to open the schools. We're talking about Oakland Middle, Whitworth, the Cannon, and Central Magnet, and also two point nine million basically to cover classroom teachers and other growth costs. So while we're asking for thirteen million more dollars, it's simply, simply to accommodate one growth and open schools and meet these required payments towards retirement, medical, et cetera. Now, I want to also go with record and say, I think the board also remembers that the only books that, even though this is an adoption year for language arts and forest language, our intention at this time is not to purchase those books. However, we are going to spend roughly eight hundred thousand dollars towards books that will accommodate growth, and the fact that the high schools are going from a six to a seven-period schedule, so they'll need more books in the hands of kids. So we're having to purchase that. No fluff. I don't know that there's any money anywhere else in this budget that we can pull from to do much of anything, but I know there's been a interest on the part of the board to maybe look at classified and do something there. So it's kind of a, just a quick snapshot of what the budget's like, and pretty much what I want to say.
Discussion. Mr. Hodge?
Okay. I brought it up several times on this, this classified commitment we made three years ago. We paid, and it was, it was a commitment to try to retain classified staff, maintenance workers, secretary, bookkeepers, custodians, that we were losing to the private sector and MTSU primarily. So I think we had a study done on this thing, and saw we were underpaying these people. So we basically agreed to go two percent deal on three straight years. Last year, we missed it. Looking at these figures here, as far as this seven hundred thousand dollars we're moving around tonight, it looks like we're moving, we're losing more people. I guess my question is, when will these, when will these people get what's due to them? You know, we just going to keep putting it off year after year? I guess...
I mean, if you're asking me, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to do it. Two things. One, the reason there's seven hundred thousand dollars move around is, in large part, a lot, a lot of the classified, pardon me, yeah, classified folks don't get paid for days they don't work. We had about eight or nine shutdown days, which generated some funds that could be moved around. But, I mean, I think everybody up here is in favor of giving classified, and for that matter, certified, some more money, if we can find it. I had Mr. Sandvig do some, do some work with respect to what it would cost. Now, if we wanted to give a classified two percent raise, it would cost us five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. If you gave them a one percent, it's two hundred and seventy-three thousand. The only thing in the pipeline we're hearing for teachers might be, you know, there's discussion at the legislature that they'd get a one-time bonus. Well, the last bonus they got was two or three years ago, and it, I think it was somewhere around two hundred and eighty, eighty dollars or something like that, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars per certified employee. There's not any kind of one or two percent state raise that's coming down the pipeline. But if we gave, for example, if we gave classified two percent, that would be five hundred and forty-six thousand. We gave them one percent, that would be two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. If we gave certified two percent, that'd be three million forty-nine thousand. If we gave them one percent, that's one million five hundred and twenty-four thousand. So if we gave a one percent raise to both certified and classified, we're talking over one, about one point eight. And if we left, you know, it's, we've been down, many of us have been down here a long time. It's hard to give certified a raise and not give classified, and it's hard to give classified and not give certified. I don't know where you draw the line. I'm like Mr. Hodge, I'd like to, certainly like to honor a commitment to classified, but I'd also, if we do something there, I'd like to see us do something for certified. But that leads us to the, to the reality question, where's the money coming from?
Well, from my personal standpoint, we, we promised these people two percent a year for three years. We missed it last year. From my point of view, I'm going off the board in August. I don't know how Doris feels, and Doris could tell you, but from my point of view, I'm afraid that if we don't do something this year, you're going to have two new people on the board. They're not, they don't know what the commitment was. And I just, I just feel like that we need to try to dig in here and try to find something to, to, to give them what we've promised. I mean, we didn't, I'm not, not against teachers. I'd like to give teachers a ten percent rate. They deserve every bit of that. But we didn't promise them two percent. We always try to give them what the state gives them, but the state really doesn't give the classified people raises. So I feel like we made a commitment to do that. I think we should try to do it. I know everybody won't agree with that, but that's just my standpoint. If anybody else wants to make a comment, they're certainly welcome, too.
Chairman, we had the reappraisal from county, and, you know, it's kind of a complicated thing, but basically, when you reappraise the property, you're supposed to drop the rate back, which you would net, net no additional funds. However, there was some growth in there, too, that sometimes gets kind of hidden, but so the capacity may be there that we, we don't have the final figures, I don't think, on that. But you got a certified rate, but then they, they have the hard job of setting a new rate as far as the funding. So we're not quite there yet. So we don't know exactly what the county commission would do with that. This is, this is an election year for the whole commission, is it not? That sometime influences.
I have a question. What, what is the possibility of going in at midterm and asking for a modification to your budget? Once, you know, we've gotten over the reappraisal, we've gotten over a reelection or election, is it, is it a possibility of reconsidering this at midterm?
I mean, I think if we're going to do that, we've got to lay the groundwork immediately so that they'll know that, I mean, I would assume the only way that would come to fruition is there's some kind of, you know, increase in the, in the collection of sales tax and property tax, so it shakes some money loose, or if they're willing to go into debt service and take some money to make some raises. I mean, I know the county last year kind of froze their step raises, but I know this year they're giving their people a one percent raise, and I think they would argue that's, well, that's because they had a freeze on their step raises. I think that's coming out of debt service, which troubles me a little bit, you know, I don't, I don't get into it with them, but they're getting one percent and we're getting nothing. But again, I think they counter that with, well, you know, we froze step raises last year, you know, and maybe we could come out of here and say, hey, we're going down and, respectfully ask them to tap into debt service and find some money for our classified people.
Kelly?
How much extra funds are, on fund ending balance above the required amount do we have? Are we anticipating?
To quote Mr. Sandvig, he's raided everything we know how to raid, and I don't think we got another penny, another penny in fund balance.
I bet he could raid some more.
He said, this right here, we're two point, we've got two point seven, don't we?
Two point seven what?
He said our end of fund balance is four, four percent or something here.
Yeah, but I mean, that four million dollars we're using to open those schools is coming directly out of fund balance.
On the bottom line there?
That'll reduce it, see, we're right now, we're two point seven above fund balance, and we're going to take four million out of there. I mean, the fund balance will, will be built back up a little bit between now and, you know, a later time. I mean, maybe we can find a way, as you say, to get some kind of commitment from them if we see, I don't remember, Mr. Oden's been around a long time, Jeff's been around, I don't know that they've ever done anything midstream with respect to, Jeff's not, he doesn't know. You know, Ms. Michael's been around.
I've been around a long time, too, and I, and Mr. Sandvig does his job, and he does it very well. He, he makes sure there's plenty of money to, to do the things that we have to do, and I think he is sharp enough to find some money if he looked real hard.
Yeah, I don't think that's fair, Rick. I mean, I don't know if there's not even money to find, if he can find money. I mean, that's, that's, I don't, I don't think it's fair to say.
Well, I think that's just the way I feel.
Well.
I'm just going to make one final comment, and, and I still go back to, this is a commitment that this board made three years ago, and we didn't, we didn't work it into last year's budget, and evidently, we didn't spend much time on working in this year's budget. The way I feel like, if we didn't do it last year, it should have been the number one item on this budget. So I'll leave it at that, and then whatever the board wants to do is, it's bound to me. But I still think, Mr. Reed, you corrected that we passed this thing three years ago. It's still this board's obligation, whether it's a year down the road, two years down the road, to see this through, correct?
We have to go back to one of the minutes, see what kind of commitment we made. Understand the board thinks it made a commitment, and needs to honor its commitments. If the money's not there, though, I don't know how you can necessarily do that this year.
But, but you always have the commitment. That's been an issue raised to me, that we're stringing this thing out, that we won't never do it.
Right. From a contractual standpoint, I don't know, you have a contract that obligates the board to, to the raise, but if you make a commitment, like most people here, you want to honor your commitments you make.
I do want to make another comment. You said that was unfair, but I prefaced it by saying, I think he does an excellent job. I think he makes sure that there's money in there. And I, and I was not saying anything against Mr. Sandvig whatsoever. I'm just saying, I think he could look.
Doris, you have a question?
Well, first off, we don't find money. It's got to be there. If we got it, we have to take it away from some other area to, to move it here. But Terry, this is not a precedent-setting thing. If I remember correctly, several years ago, and I think, Rick, you and Eric both were teaching at the time, we had a similar promise made to our classified. County commission approved it. We, we gave two raises, but when it came time for that third one, it never came to be. That's probably close to fifteen, twenty years ago.
There was one made to principals about thirty years ago, too, that never...
So, I mean, this isn't, this isn't new. What's happening isn't new, it's just that the resources, according to Ms. Nolan, is not here. And I sense that, that our budget is in good shape as far as the county commission is concerned in its present state.
I'll just counter that. Basically telling you, I disagree with what you're saying. You make a commitment to somebody, you fall through with it. Is that something? You know, I don't know what happened ten, fifteen years ago. I know what happened the last six years.
Mr. Blair? I think we're all, well, I'll restate, I'm confident that we're all anxious to fulfill that commitment to our classified employees. What I would, and I'm not sure how to say this, but to recommit ourselves to that, and with the, with the effort that the central office has made in, in saving every dime, you know, we've, we've been able to, to move some money around to pay for the expensive retirement and medical that has climbed this year, that, that it continues to be a work in progress. Maybe utilizing what Doris said, in that maybe at some point in this time, at some point in this next school year, between whatever savings that, that come about, that maybe we can still fulfill that commitment within this budget. And again, maybe it continues to be a work in progress, but I, I'm confident that we're all committed to this, this two percent. Maybe, maybe we can find a way to do one percent this year, and then come back and do another percent next year, you know, just by, by constantly surveying our budget and looking at our numbers. And Mr. Gill, you and, and all of your staff have done an incredible job this year of pinching those pennies, and we would love to see you do the same job again this next year.
You know, I think we, you know, kind of connected to what Mr. Hodge said. I mean, I, it's obviously a, a year that's unique in that we've got three point four million more dollars going to retirement, another million, over a million of medical, another one point six, six five step raises. But the first two are extraordinary contributions that we don't typically have, where we could have come back and done something. And when you factor in how lousy the economy has been, and like, we got notification today that the state is considering on the BEP growth funds, cutting back on what we get next year, it really starts presenting subsequent problems down the pipe. It's just, it's just been a tough year. Now, maybe a solution is, which I'd like to see certified get something if classified, but if, if, obviously, the board feels pretty committed to giving classified something pursuant to what they did a few years back. I mean, if the county court was willing to give their folks one percent out of debt service, maybe they would be willing to give our classified one percent out of debt service. That's two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. I think theirs totaled up to be four hundred thousand. Maybe we could stay with this budget and ask them to at least, you know, give a matching one percent to classified out of debt service. one percent to classified out of debt service. At least that's a step in the right direction, and I think it shows good faith on you guys' part. I mean, we could, we could attach that as part of a, part of a motion Tuesday night, or we can do something different, I don't, I don't know, I'm just thinking, thinking out loud.
What's the pleasure of the board? Ultimately, the board makes the decision.
I did notice that, that this week, City of Murfreesboro had some, having several layoffs, which I was kind of surprised when I read it, but they indicated their, their funds weren't there, and having several layoffs and some, even despite the fact that there were several people retiring, they thought they might be able to maintain some of these, so, I don't know. And as you know, they get a lot of our money, and they, but if they're hurting, so it must be pretty universal.
Mr. Jerigan, back to Mr. Jerigan.
I've been around long enough to remember when the county could not meet its payroll. We had to wait for our checks, that's not a good feeling. This, this is a very difficult thing. We made, we made a commitment, and one of the, one of the things that concerns me about that commitment is that we did that in good faith at the time, and those, those folks looked to us to honor that commitment, and Reed is correct, there, there's no contract, it's just our word. I don't know what we need to do to keep our budget within the tax rate that's set, but I think out of a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget, that we should look diligently to fulfill a commitment we've made, because out of that, there are items in that budget, two-hundred-and-fifty million, that are not commitments. Now, where they are, I don't know.
You said that much better than I said it, but that's what I meant, the same, the same thing of going through and looking, that's, but you did say that a lot better. I know you're not finished, go ahead.
No, I, I've, I've made my point, I, I don't, I, I expect someone else that understands the budget in detail to look for that, and I, and I've listened to Mr. Gill, and I understand what he said, that he just doesn't know where that is. Well, I don't expect Mr. Gill to know where that is, he, but someone that looks at that budget can come pretty close, I bet. And that's not finding money, that's just reallocating.
Go ahead.
I move that we add a two percent raise to the classified employees to this year's budget.
Second?
I'll second.
Last question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, you're just leaving it open, you don't, as far as the source of the funding, are you making it conditional upon certain things, just open?
You know, you've got, what, five weeks for this, the budget's finally settled, a lot can happen in the last...
Yeah, they could, but...
Five weeks.
Yeah.
And if, they might chop it out, but we made this commitment, I know it's an awful year, we made them wait the year last year, Rick makes a good point, two of us are leaving the board, and the two new folks, I'm sure will be good folks, but they're not gonna feel that same level of commitment, and I don't want them classified folks to look back ten years from now, so, yeah, we were promised six percent, and we never got it, so, it's a long way of saying, no, there's no condition.
Luke?
Is there a way of putting this burden back on us, rather than going to the county commission with a, an in, an increased request, because we, we presented it to them already, what, twice, has it been twice that they've seen this in a preliminary setting, is that correct?
I think so, I, I presume that Dr. Burns' motion was, was to keep the same dollar amount spent, find a way to work within that dollar amount.
That's what, I think that's what's...
That would be my preference, I didn't want to say that, but I'll, I'll accept that interpretation.
You know, I, I think of two things when I say that, Mr. Sandvig says he's rated everything he knows to rate, I think the next thing we might do is cut into teaching positions, which, you know, maybe growth won't be what we think it is, I don't know, I mean, we'll just look, see where we can find five-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars.
So then, so I understand, the dollar amount does not go up, but we're gonna commit to the rates.
If there's a, what, I think that's what we're saying? Any, did I not say that?
Well, I'd be glad to accept an amendment if anybody wants to be more clear, I don't know where to, to find it, so, and it's easy for me to make the motion without knowing where to find it, I understand.
I just make the point that, like Mr. Gill said, if we have some unsealed certified or don't need a certified, I can live with that, but I don't want to hamper the schools by cutting certified first name.
I just don't think we can have it both ways, either we're gonna do this and, and take the pain that it takes or not, I mean, I think that's where we are.
I understand that, but I, I think in this two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar budget, we can come up with half-a-million dollars. You may save it in, you may save it in electricity, if we're putting on electricity, we may save it in there.
We may, but of course, the dilemma is, the year before last, we budgeted two-million dollars for fund balance and needed electricity, that's part of the dilemma, I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. And I will tell you with respect to teaching position, Ms. Barnes, Mr. Odom, and I, both have worked pretty hard here lately at finding ways, matter of fact, how many teachers have we transferred to try to cover all the teacher needs across county? Here in the last two or three days, I've transferred how many teachers, three or four? No, and there's more in the works, but I, I mean, all I, all I know to do is go in there and look at it, examine where there might be some money, and try to find it, like Dr. Burns said, maybe there's, you know, maybe, maybe, I'm still hung up a little bit on this debt service, and I don't want to criticize county in general, and I don't want to criticize county court, and I don't want to criticize the mayor, but, you know, they're using debt service to furnish the raise down there, why are we not privy to that same opportunity? You know, maybe they could help us with it, maybe we could split it, say, hey, would you guys at least ante up half of the two percent, and we'll try to find the other two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars? I mean, they had every intention, we opened these three schools to footing the bill, footing the bill for opening those schools. Instead, we managed money milk well enough that we're gonna open the schools at no cost to the court, and no cost to taxpayers, so I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them to help out there. I mean, if that's, you know, I certainly understand the commitment.
In light of that information, coupled with everything else we have, I call for question on this last motion.
May I have one more question to clarify, please, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, you.
So, Dr. Burns' motion is for the two-hundred-and-fifty-six-million-eight-hundred-and-one, one of them, okay, thank you, sir.
What, what it is, you're not asking, huh?
Yeah, right, right, right.
Let me just ask Mr. Gill another question, what you just mentioned, do you feel comfortable going back and asking for this?
Uh, yes. Man, I don't think it's, uh, impugues our, impugues our commitment of not raising taxes, I mean, we're just asking, say, hey, you know, we didn't think there were gonna be raises, we think our people are, deserve every bit as much as yours, how about, how about, you know, if, if, if you're barred against debt service, at least make a contribution here. I mean, when you consider we're opening those schools, I don't, I don't feel like we're going against our word or, or need mine.
Well, in that case, do we need to specify that we're not gonna increase our, the total size of our budget? I was trying to give you as much room to operate as possible by not saying that, but I sense the board wants to, to say that.
Uh, I guess based, based on that, I'd make an amendment to up this thing, whatever this amount is, let Mr. Gill take the county commission, if it doesn't fly there, we still as a board, make our commitment out of this, two-hundred-and-fifty-six-eight or whatever we have, let him first go to the county commission, try to...
Mr. Chairman?
I think, I think maybe we just say that we make this commitment, and then, I know you, I know, I know you did question, and I, and I'm sorry, but I, I think this needs to really be cleared out, we made this commitment, and I think we need to try to do it within that, but I think he can still ask for, and then, if they say no, we'll try to do what we can do, then, we'll come back and try to figure out what we can do. But leave, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere if we try to raise the total number of money that we put in there.
I agree.
I, I know the question's been told.
We're all out of order here, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I, I'm, I am concerned that, I don't want to, the budget that Mr. Gill has presented to us requires no tax increase, is that correct?
Yes.
I do not want to present a budget to the committee that would require a tax increase.
I think that's good, I think that's good, I think everybody's committed to that. Okay, we're done, Mr. Kelly called for the question, I'm gonna stop it right here, a little late, Mr. Kelly, but I'm sorry. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? General discussion by board, I know one person's got something to say.
Yeah, me too, I go.
You know, I can't let it go. Today, my wife and I celebrate our forty-ninth wedding anniversary.
I don't know how in the world she did it. You said you were only fifty-nine.
She was very diligent.
Congratulations. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick comment, I, I didn't address Dr. Pax's remarks, and now, thinking about it, I've kind of thought better, I, I want to say that nobody, and, and certainly Angel needs no defending, but in defense of her and anyone else that, that, that's in the approval process for fundraisers, ever set out to circumvent or violate state law on, on fundraisers. The fundraiser that came into question, every kid was allowed to participate, where we apparently dropped the ball, we didn't know we dropped the ball, but was that you can no longer do incentives during the school day for the amount of items sold, or if you reached a particular goal. We didn't know that, well, we, I, I don't, somebody reported to the state, the state called us and told us, not supposed to do that, didn't know it, so we immediately put a stop to it, and came in compliance with state law. It's, it's funny, I talked to a gentleman today who's in the fundraising business, said they do that everywhere, everybody's having incentives across state Tennessee. I don't know what, why, why are y'all putting into it? And I said, well, we've been told we have to. So one, two points I want to make, one, we never set out to violate fundraising protocol, and secondly, these schools are dependent upon fundraisers to work, to make it happen. I mean, what's gonna happen someday, when fundraisers are totally declared, disallowed, people, we're gonna be coming back to the taxpayers to pay for copy bills, to pay for laminating bills, to pay for more technology in schools, to pay for, what else? The list goes on, all of you guys being principals, you know how much we depend on fundraising to make schools run. And the irony is, the ones that are typically, the ones involved in the fundraising, the ones whose parents and children benefit from it, you know, I've heard for years, well, why do I have to pay taxes, I don't have kids in schools anymore? Well, one of the ways, one of the ways to address that is ask, you know, is have your kids raise, you know, generate revenue from within a school. But it's getting harder and harder, and it's, and it's, I'm sure Angel was a little offended by the remark made a while ago, and, and I'm offended every time I read the paper that, oh, they don't, you know, they don't think they have to follow the law, they don't have to abide by the law. Problem is, we don't, the law changes with every particular incident when it comes to fundraising, don't you agree, Jeff and Angel? So, I don't think Dr. Bridgman had any intention to, to circumvent state law, and, you know, obviously it's hard to please everyone all the time, but I think she's doing her best.
Any more comments?
I'd like to say that I appreciate Mr. Gill addressing that, because if you had not mentioned it, I was going to mention it, because I had talked to Angel back when I was, we were all getting phone calls, and it was my understanding that the, the rules kind of changed on us as the time went on, and so, I think it's unfortunate that those gentlemen left before our comment session could take place. But I'd also like to say that I know that this has been a very trying year for everyone concerned with campus school, administration at the school, the administration here, and certainly parents and students at the school. But it's my understanding that, you know, that there, there's two sides to every coin, and, you know, time, time will tell on which, where the coin is going to land there, and I, I hope that it lands in the best interest of the students at our campus school.
Anyone else?